Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Long Hill Township Board of Education meeting for June 2nd. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. At a quick notice of this meeting of the Long Hill Township Board of Education was given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act as follows. Notice was sent to the Echo Sentinel and Daily Record on October 14th, 2024. Notices were posted on the bulletin board in the first floor entrance hall of the School District Administration Building, Gillette, New Jersey. Notices were filed with the township clerk and notices were mailed to all persons who have requested individual notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mrs. Daly?
Here.
Mr. DeChamos?
Here.
Mr. Foster? Mr. Grosskopf? Dr. Marr?
Here.
Mrs. McLennan?
Here.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Here.
Mrs. Case?
Here.
We're going to get started with our presentations. Welcome to everybody here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alexis.
Thank you, Mrs. Case. This is a great crowd. We're excited. So we have about four different presentations. We have our youngest guests here, and we are pleased that our kindergartners and their teachers are here to talk about the circus yoga experience. We're equally pleased to have our softball team back again here this year. We are very happy to have our faculty and staff here to be recognized for service milestones and retirements. And we'll close the presentation section with our fifth grade science teacher, Mr. Nestler, who would like to share the highlights of his year with Peter, his seeing eye puppy at Millington School. We'll then take a short break for refreshments. So first up are our kindergartners. Welcome, everyone. So nice to see you.
Good evening. I'm here to talk to you about an amazing experience we had this year in kindergarten. The Cultural Arts Committee brought back circus yoga. Jack, do you have my presentation? Oh, no. Thank you. I have a whole lot more. So this year with our circus yoga came back. It came back after seven long years. Seven years ago, we started at the African Savannah. So I highlighted a few students that you may look familiar up there. So we started seven years ago. A few things happened after 2019 that prevented us from having them back again. So we were excited. We went from the African Savannah to the Arctic Circle. So Ms. Erin is our cultural art, uh, Ms. Erin is our residency director. She split the Arctic Circle into five different regions, and each classroom was given one. We talked about the population. We talked about animals. We talked about all of the different things that happen in the Arctic Circle. My class was given Alaska in the summer. So we talked about what we thought Alaska would look like in the summer, and the pictures that she gave us were much different than we had envisioned. So we talked about the different animals, the landscape. And then she gave us 20 animals. Each student picked an animal, and they were given two weeks to make a presentation along with their families. We gave them a basic presentation that could be done on paper or in a Google Doc. And each of these students picked an animal, and then they presented. I know I didn't do my first presentation until I was in high school. These five-year-olds and six-year-olds knocked it out of the park. I brought a few of them here to show a little snippet of their presentations. So we're going to start with Indiana Mahoney.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
You don't have to go that close, then.
Okay. My animal is the Arctic fox in the summer. My animal's habitat: the Arctic tundra. Yeah. It is icy and cold, and there is not many trees. The summer is very short. In the summer, the sun doesn't set, making the day, and the days are very long. There are over 400 types of flowers that grow there. In the summer, the top layer of tundra melts, making the ground very wet like a marsh. What does my animal look like? Arctic foxes have thick fur that change color to help them camouflage. In the summer, it is brown or gray. In the winter, it is white to help them blend in with the snow. They have a small, they have small round ears, a small black nose, and a long bushy tail.
And now, Easton Taudry.
My animal is the giant Pacific octopus. Giant octobuses are sea animals with soft bodies and eight arms. They have big heads and are reddish-brown in color. They can change color and camouflage with plants and rocks. In the day, they hide in dens, caves, or holes digged into the ocean floor. In the night, they leave their dens to hunt for food. They eat small fish, clams, crabs, and snails. Sharks, seals, and sea otters eat big and big fishes, eat giant octobuses.
Sophie Hall.
My animal is the orca whale, also known as the killer whale. Orcas have black and white skin. Their skin feels like rubble. Orcas sleep in groups of pods. They have one eye open and one eye closed, one part of the brain awake and one part of the brain asleep.
And Colby Monti.
Puffin by Colby Monti. Puffins have black and white feathers and orange feet. Puffins walk on land and fly.
All right. So they presented their animals to the class, and then we had to get to work on some artwork. So their masks that they had made were first made in kindergarten during art class with Mrs. Dunn. And then we needed some help making the scenery and also the masks, kind of judging them up a little bit. So I'd like to call up my two sixth-grade Horizon Art students. Mrs. Keegan came up with a great idea that we shall use the Horizon Art students at Central School, two of them being Paige Keegan and Leah Kwan. We, the best part about sixth-grade Horizon Art is they're the only other grade level that did circus yoga. So they were able to then kind of turnkey it and help us out. So Paige helped with some mask making and some of the scenery for around the stage. And I needed a 30-foot-long banner for the back, and I had an amazing artist make it for us the first time around. And then lucky for me, her daughter happened to be in Horizon Art, and she helped create a 30-foot mural with icebergs and a reflection. So Leah and some of her friends, they were using their guide time, their lunchtime, in order to get that background done for us. And it came out absolutely amazing. It comes out better in some of the other pictures. So thank you to the Horizon Art students. So then it was time to get to work for the presentation. So Ms. Erin shows up. She looks at your class. She sees what your class's abilities are, and she puts together a performance. Our favorite thing about circus yoga is there is no memorization, no memorization of songs, no speaking parts, and there's no choreography. So basically, the kids are asked to work together in order to create a show. A lot of it is partner work. So we talk about how being with a partner, one of the most important things is to help your partner shine. So if you are helping make them successful, you look successful as well. Mistakes are bound to happen in the show, and we talk about how recovering from those mistakes with grace kind of makes the show carry on. So the first show started with an animal parade. All of our masks, we came out and we presented them. We did focus and balance exercises. And then for our big finale, we did a flying activity. So Ms. Erin and I were on the ground. We lifted the students into the air, and they were doing different poses, such as beaver poses and flying animal poses. And our big finale were two orcas flying through the air and grabbing hands, and then we safely put them back on the floor. I'm not going to lie, that was a tough one. So this is one of our flyers here, and I always feel like the success of something that happens in kindergarten is when they write about a favorite memory. So Haley, will you come up and read us your favorite memory from kindergarten? She was a moth. Yes, moths are in the Arctic.
My name is Haley Isaacson. My favorite thing about kindergarten is circus yoga because my teacher flew me on her feet.
So we are so grateful to Mrs. Keegan and the Cultural Arts Committee because we have been granted another round of circus yoga next year, and we are going to get out of the Arctic, and we are headed to the Amazon Rainforest. So if you are able to, we'd love to have you come to the show. Thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
So, Mrs. Clark, thank you. And I understand you're here in a dual role tonight, so congratulations on the second part, which we're coming up to. But thank you, kindergartners. Thank you, sixth-grade art, Horizon Art students. And I saw the show firsthand, and it was excellent. So I look forward to next year and the rainforest. So next is going to be our softball team. And before I invite Principal Vitarello forward, I have to say it's a privilege to recognize all of you. Congratulations to you and to Coach Hockmeyer. It was a remarkable playoff run, and trust me, you'll remember this season and the bonds you developed with your teammates for a long time. And I might add, there's something deeply satisfying about exceeding expectations. Keep that in mind as you continue your journeys. Mr. V.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Great job, kindergartners as well. And we're here again to congratulate the softball team, who we're so proud of. The girls' softball team, you worked so hard this season, both on the field and off the field. It's really challenging. Many people don't realize if you're playing a sport or involved in many extracurricular activities. This girls' softball team, they have excellent grades. They work very hard. They come to school. That balance is very, very challenging because many of them do more than just softball as well, too. Many of them do a lot of other extracurricular activities, either in school or outside of school. So we're so proud of you for all of your hard work, dedication, and perseverance. And this team truly embodies a comeback spirit. They really embodied this in the championship game for coming back at the end of the game, which was so wonderful to see. So I want to congratulate all of the players tonight and also Coach Hockmeyer for all of your hard work. I also want to thank all of the parents for their support in raising such amazing student athletes. A special shout out to our athletic director, Jennifer Clark, for working so hard this season. Many of you were all familiar with what the weather has been like. So we have, she has worked so hard to try to reschedule all the games, and there's so many variables involved. The other teams, our team, transportation, school schedule. So thank you for all of your hard work to, you know, to get the games scheduled for the girls. I also want to shout out our buildings and ground staff for keeping the fields in as good condition as they can for all of the sports, and also the business office for helping out with transportation and all those things because we need a bus to get there. So every time something gets canceled, everything needs to be rescheduled. So it really takes a team effort. Both the girls embodied that and all of the support staff to make everything work for the season. So we really, really appreciate it. So shout out to all the girls. We'd like to recognize each of them. We have certificates. If someone could help me just pass these out so we can keep everything running. So we'll call you up for your certificates, one at a time. Paige Anthony. We'd like to take a picture, so yeah, at the end. So if you could just slide down. Orla Butler. Alexandra Clark. Annabella Giambro. Riley Hall. Not here. Virginia McKenna. Alexandra Miller. Mackenzie Miller. Addison Peruna. Chloe Sealy. Angelina Stower. Julia Stower. Ariel Vivar. And Bella Wiggins. And Coach Hockmeyer.
All right. Thank you so much. This is an amazing team. I want to first thank everyone for inviting us out, and I want to thank the Board of Ed and for the ceremony and for acknowledging Central School's softball team again. Central School softball program has been very successful for many years now. This season, our team recorded a 10-win season with only two losses, capturing another championship. Over the past four years, our team has been able to win four consecutive Central Jersey Athletic Association Tournament Championship Games. I'd like to recognize four eighth graders on this team: Riley Hall, Lena Stower, Bella Wiggins, and Orla Butler. They've played all three years at Central. Over those three years, these girls have amassed an impressive record of 37 wins with only two losses. Our success this year and over the past many years is directly related to their hard work and their dedication, okay? And for the families that put up with that kind of time and effort. I personally want to thank each and every one of them and let them know that it's been an honor to be called your coach, and I can't wait for another one next year. Thank you very much. Okay. Now on to staff recognition. The foundation of any district lies in a strong faculty and staff. And here in Long Hill, we're very fortunate to have an outstanding group. Tonight, we honor and thank our staff who have reached service milestones and well-deserved retirements. Our principals would like to share a few words about each staff member's contributions to the district. But before I turn this over to them, I'd like to recognize two of our service milestone recipients. First is Mrs. Mickles. For the last 15 and a half years, Liz has been the superintendent's confidential assistant. She's an expert in personnel. No rule or requirement escapes her. She has remarkable institutional knowledge. She seems to know everything about the district. And she's a first-rate detective. She can find any information we need in or out of the district, usually in under 10 minutes. But she also has the organizational and interpersonal skills to keep things running smoothly in the board office. She is professional, conscientious, collaborative, and fair-minded. She cares deeply about our students, staff, and families, and helps out whenever she can. We're very fortunate to have her in this role. Congratulations, Liz. We look forward to the next 15. Next is Dr. Jones. Lori has been serving the students, staff, and families of the district for the last 15 years. She has balanced her responsibilities as Gillette principal and director of curriculum during that time, and is looking forward to becoming the full-time director of curriculum in July. Not one to shy away from challenges, Lori is regularly the first one to volunteer for new assignments. She holds the current record for the most auxiliary titles in the district, ranging from affirmative action officer to Title IX coordinator to attendance officer, and will be operating under several more in the coming year. Her versatility and experience will be key to the success of our instructional initiatives next year. Congrats on 15 years of service and an exciting new leadership role, Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Alexis. I appreciate it. I would like to recognize three individuals this evening. One is Mr. Manto for serving 10 years in the district. Mr. Manto began at Central School. He came to Gillette School, and now we share him with Millington as well. He brings energy, enthusiasm, and a love for fitness that inspires students and staff every day at Gillette and Millington. His dedication to creating a fun and engaging learning environment makes physical education a highlight for all of our students. Parents appreciate the care and encouragement Mr. Manto provides. He fosters teamwork, confidence, and a love for healthy habits. Congratulations, Mr. Manto, on 10 years. Okay. Next, Ms. Ritchie, aka My Work Mom, aka Depending on My Move Other Things, right, Ms. Ritchie? She has been the heart of Gillette School for 10 years, showing a true, genuine commitment to students, families, and all of our staff. Her care and dedication go beyond her daily tasks. She's a trusted face, a listening ear, and a steadfast support to everyone who enters our doors. Through her kindness, organization, and her hard work and ethics, she ensures our school runs smoothly. She fosters a warm and welcoming environment for all. You are not getting through that vestibule without her knowing you are in our building. Gillette School and myself simply would never be the same without her. Congratulations, Ms. Ritchie. Mrs. Pischiotti. 20 years for Mrs. Pischiotti. She has been a steady and caring presence at Gillette School, known for her calmness, her thoughtful approach to all, and her dedication to helping both students and staff truly succeed. She is a trusted problem solver amongst her colleagues, and she is a true advocate for all of her students and their families. She always puts the students' best interests first. Her commitment to creative, to creating a positive learning environment has earned her praise from parents and families year after year. She is kind. She is professional. She is a friend, and Gillette School is very lucky to have her here. Congratulations.
Why don't we bring Principal Dawson up? We'll just go in chronological order here.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few remarks about a number of staff members from Millington School. Yael Locke is one of our speech therapists in the district. She's a valued member of our district, working with students in the speech therapy department. Over the years, we have seen her develop relationships with students, and she's always encouraging them to apply the skills they learn in speech to carry over into the general classroom. So thank you, Yael, for five years of service. Melanie Muir, for her five years of service, funny story. Melanie's tenure with us began the week before the pandemic. She was hired as a fourth-grade teacher as that teacher moved into a special education position. She had one week to meet with Mrs. Fisher, learn the ropes, and inherit a classroom, and then we said, "You're going home." Ms. Muir demonstrated her ability right away to adapt to all situations within a short period of time. She is one of the most positive staff members in the building. She is always smiling, which has helped her develop close connections. She is always smiling, which has helped her develop close connections to her students. It is evident that they enjoy being in their classroom. Ms. Carrie O'Reilly is being recognized for five years of service. She's a member of our Special Education Department at Millington School. She teaches currently in the last couple of years in many co-teaching environments. Hands down, her colleagues, and this is not always easy to team people up to work together all year, her colleagues, and she works, I think, with three or four different people, always talk about the team approach and the ability to connect with her. And that carries over to the students. So, Ms. O'Reilly, we thank you. You always have a friendly personality, and you champion the success of all students. Thank you for years of service. Ten years of service, Mrs. Fisher. I believe Mrs. Fisher is here. Brianna Fisher has taught both fourth grade and special education at Millington School. She's a valued member of our staff, as she has taken a leadership role in our school Sunshine Committee, organizing team-building activities as well as staff games to allow for a fun working environment. We try to make it as a fun learning environment for students, but it's important that our teachers feel that way, too. Last year, Brianna completed her coursework towards a master's in administration with a certificate to be a principal. And I mentored her, and she worked under me. And her ability to identify tasks and plan a way to tackle those tasks means she's going to be a successful administrator one day. So, Brianna, we appreciate all you've done for your students, working in the in-class support class, she's got small group pull-out, but she's always looking to benefit her students and work well with them and parents. So, thank you, Brianna Fisher. Mrs. Pam Fitzsimmons began her career at Millington School as a fourth-grade teacher. She has moved to the fifth-grade ELA position focused on writing. She has been an open contributor at grade-level meetings as well as our ELA Professional Learning Committee meetings. Mrs. Fitzsimmons begins most lessons with a quick do-now in which students develop the writing prompt. She recognized early on that by develop, having the students develop the writing prompts, the students were more engaged in using the skills they need to learn in writing because they were responding to something that they had an interest in. So, we thank Mrs. Fitzsimmons for her 10 years of service to Millington School. Mrs. Elaine Murphy has worked at Millington School for 10 years. She's worked as a one-to-one paraprofessional, primarily with students with autism. She has been observed quickly making positive connections to the students assigned to her. Her ability to implement strategies that are individualized for particular students, and it changes from student to student. She never falters. She's always able to implement the plan to help them meet their goals. The teachers who work with her have commented on her ability to facilitate lessons as well as monitor specific behavior plans and support students emotionally and socially as well. So, thank you, Mrs. Murphy. We're getting there. Mr. Nestler, I know he's here today with Peter. Mr. Nestler began as a fourth-grade teacher at Millington School. When the fifth-grade science teacher opening was identified, it was a no-brainer that Mr. Nestler was the right person for the job. It is evident that he is passionate about the subject he teaches, as students are always observed in being engaged in open discussion as well as working collaboratively to make connections in science. From Night Under the Stars to leading the green team, to creating Earth Day lessons that were used across the district, Mr. Nestler has brought his love of science to all our students. Thank you, Mr. Nestler. Mrs. Spinello, come on down. Come on down. When you get to 25 years, you come on down. Mrs. Spinello is recognized for 25 years of service at Millington School. When I began working at Millington 22 years ago, Mrs. Spinello was teaching third grade. It was within a few short years that her family began to grow, and she moved to a part-time position, eventually working as a part-time basic skills teacher before coming back full-time. I think some of her adult children might be here, so they've grown quite a bit. She is a key member of our intervention team. We always talk as teachers about having a toolbag of strategies to help and support students. If she's not doing it for her own students, she's often observed helping other teachers in the, in the building support students who may have a need that she has some expertise in. Over the years, she has led staff training, professional learning communities, and mentored novice teachers to support their growth. Millington School is lucky to have Shell Spinello as a key member of our staff. She's always observed cheering on her students to give them the independent skills to utilize back in the classroom. She has helped countless students in her small-group classroom, and we are so fortunate to have her as part of the Millington School staff. Kathy Dobachevsky, can you come on up, please? We have a couple retirees. Kathy Dobachevsky became a reading program specialist and worked closely with students who had identified reading needs. As a Wilson-trained specialist, she was able to provide specific skill-based instruction to support her students to allow them to progress over time. She has also been observed training teachers to help them carry over programs into their classroom to support all students, and we appreciate those efforts over the years. She has worked closely with members of the child study team as well as our intervention team to identify the best plan for individual students. I have observed those, those meetings over the years where they were trying to figure out the best plan to help each student individually. Her knowledge helped map out a game plan so students can meet success. Kathy, we wish you well in your retirement. And we have one more retirement. Mrs. Freeman couldn't make it tonight, but I have some words for her. Hopefully, she'll listen. Mrs. Freeman has been the Millington School nurse for 25 years. I can't even think of the number of students who have gone to see Mrs. Freeman. She has made so many positive connections to not only students but families as well. Parents use her as a resource when dealing with medical and even emotional situations. Our teachers frequent her for medical support or advice. She has been a confidant to many as they deal with personal situations. She has always, she has also been a valued member of the main office team. She begins every day by being in the main office greeting students and teachers. She updates our student attendance, and will reach out and check in with parents as needed. We count on Mrs. Freeman for just about anything in the school. Now that her daughters, by the way, who were students when I began at Millington School, are having their own children, Mrs. Freeman is called to the next task in her journey: being a grandma. We will miss her and wish her the best in her retirement. Thank you, Mrs. Freeman.
Thanks, Mrs. Dawson.
Okay, for 10 years of service, Isabella Di Biassi. I don't think she was able to make it tonight, but I would like to just say a few year, a few words for her, excuse me, for 10 years of service. She is a very resourceful and well-planned-out teacher. She's always consistently challenging her students to actively read and write at a high level. She organizes activities and supportive resources that always stretch our students and challenge them to be ready for high school. One of the highlights from her class that I always enjoy seeing and hearing about is when she incorporates student-led Socratic seminars in her class. And if you're not familiar with a Socratic seminar, it's a student-led discussion in which students participate and analyze text or topic through questioning and peer dialogue. The goal is for students to synthesize their thoughts regarding the text in which they've recently read. I always enjoy watching and hearing about these students' experiences, and she's just wonderful to have and a true value at Central Middle School. So, we thank her for her service, even though she cannot be here tonight. And for 20 years of service, Dan Salzer, who's here tonight. Dan, give him a round of applause, please. Dan truly has a passion for making history come alive in his classes. He is a very, very resourceful teacher and routinely incorporates various maps, visual aids, primary historical sources and texts, which are so important, and graphics to help bring eighth-grade American history come to life for his students. Dan, since I've known him, has also continually grown and is always pushing his students to grow as well. Recently, he has incorporated a series of writing reflections for them based on historical events. And I recently got a chance to sit down and talk to him about this at our end-of-the-year conference. He was very passionate about it and excited that he incorporated them. He shared with me that they basically have raised the bar for students academically, and he challenges them to develop deeper understanding of the context of the text and the people that lived during the time period. And I could tell through just the conversation with him how passionate he was about it, and he shared how excited his students were to participate in these activities. So, we thank you for your service, and we're very grateful to have you at Central Middle And our Central Middle School retiree, Linda Seppi. Linda, we're truly going to miss you at Central Middle School. You are an extremely dedicated staff member that has always put your students' well-being and academic success first. One of the signs and messages that I always remember hearing you echo and seeing in your room is one of encouraging students to have a growth mindset. That is exactly the mindset that I have always known you to embody as a teacher. Since I have known you, you've always worked diligently, using data to best tailor academic instruction and ultimately prepare your students for high school readiness and future readiness in life. You have a reflective approach that has always been open-minded to continual professional development and the growth of your students. You have always been very attentive, which is always shown in your classroom. Math can be challenging subject for students at times, especially in eighth grade, but you always encourage your students to try to put their best foot forward, never give up, and give it their all. We hope you enjoy the additional time you have with your family, and I wish you all the happiness in a fulfilling retirement. Thank you so much for your service.
All right. Thank you, Mr. V. And thank you, principals. Congratulations to our service award recipients and our retirees. We have one more presentation before we enjoy some mini cupcakes, and I'm going to invite
And parents, feel free to go around the other side if it's easier for photos.
So, the fifth grade team put a, just a small presentation together to get, oh, yeah, good call. Thank you, Ms. Dawson. Here we go. So, the fifth grade team put a quick presentation together just to share some of the things that we've done with the seeing-eye-dogs this year and to show our appreciation to both the board and the administration for allowing us to go forward with this program.
This year, our school, this year, our school raised two seeing-eye-dogs. This is Peter and Bugsy. Peter is raised by Mr. Nestler in science class. Bugsy is raised by Mr. Simmel in math class. Peter and Bugsy are great dogs in our school and feel, it feels like they were part of the family in Millington School.
We love having dogs at our school. We get to take them on walks, take them to the bathroom, and take them on walks to the garden. We get to do so much with them, and it's so fun showing them new stuff. We read with them, and we even taught them how to sit and shake.
It was so much fun having Peter and Bugsy at Millington School this year. Some students were so inspired, they made pictures of stuffed animals and even thirty prints of the dogs.
The dogs benefit from being in large groups of kids and being exposed to new experiences that will help them be better seeing-eye-dogs. These dogs have learned to be trusted and responsible for other people.
Having the dogs in class makes it more enjoyable and brings joy to so many kids. Just seeing them makes some kids day. My best memory with them was when I was Employee of the Week, and Peter fell asleep on my arm. It was so adorable, and I hope students in the lower grades will get to enjoy what I had. And now that Peter and Bugsy got their pictures in the yearbook, we will remember them forever.
We would like to thank the board and the administration for their continued support.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Nestler and fifth-grade team. That was terrific. All right, we're going to take, we're going to take a few minutes to have some refreshments. Please join us. Thank you.
All right. Well, that was very, wonderful, really, is what I'd like to say.
A great meeting, yeah.
So, we are moving to communications.
Nothing to report.
Okay. I don't have anything. Board, committee, and liaison reports. We'll start with Karen.
Okay. Morris County Ed Services Commission. I attended a virtual meeting on May 14th. Just two things. We did our CSA evaluation, and then I'm going to read this directly as it is in my, my update notes, because I might miss something. It deals with changes that are, they have cooperative pricing, you know, we've joined some ed services because they get the conglomerate, you know, they bring together a lot of the supplies, and you can order in bulk, and it's easier for the district, et cetera. Well, there's some changes that are being proposed, and some of the ESCs have expressed concerns and put those concerns in writing. So, the first was a proposal to eliminate time and material bids for construction repair, roofing repairs, plumbing, and electrical repairs. The proposed code would require each district to bid each of those services on their own, just as similar to new construction and renovation projects. The bids that they solicit save time and money. The additional accountability for time and material bid monitoring would be very troublesome because not everybody could be there or could be there monitoring each site. Supposedly, what was proposed is, is on a postponement, which might be a good sign because they heard the concerns from the ESC. I wanted to mention it because I guess it could affect how we order and how we do things and whatever, so it could be, have an impact on us. With, oh, and the next meeting is going to be a week from Wednesday. Again, it'll be virtual, and I'll attend. With respect to governance, all were present. First thing we talked about was the mission and the vision, and we're going to utilize AI. And George is working with, is going to be working with the administration and some staff members to put together, let's say, a first view of the, the mission, vision. We'll get it to the committee, we'll look it over, and there might be some back and forth, and then it'll definitely come to the board for back and forth. But it's, it's, it's beginning. The things are beginning. Self-evaluation is all ready to go. Okay, so you can access it as of today. You have till the 11th. it's shorter, very honestly. It's shorter than before, but you have also bigger opportunity to put in some, you know, free writing, so it might be very beneficial to take advantage of that. We already went through this. We discussed the June meeting and how tight it was going to be with all the activities. Finance met this last Wednesday, several bookings. We had a Google's meet call with a representative from Brown &amp; Brown who does our evaluation and helps us get our health benefit plans, and it was requested to do a review. So basically, they actually contacted Cigna, AmeriHealth, New Jersey Solutions Fund, SHIP, et cetera, to try to see if we could get better rates. One of the things that we suffer from is having a low pool and so few members that are enrolled. And below 100, if there are less than 150, excuse me, members, then individual claims are not processed. And looking at individual claims and the occurrence and the age groups, et cetera, et cetera, is important in calculating the rates. So to give us some sort of benefit, because we're in a low pool, there are other districts. We're grouped together, and it does limit the alternatives we have. AmeriHealth did come back and provide us a lower rate, because they were willing to try to estimate a rate based on demographics. However, to replace the plan, you have to have equal to or better than. And unfortunately, with respect to their network, they fell very far short of the present network that we have. So it was just not-- we could not make move, so we stayed put. According to the-- I'm going to need some help on this one. The current contract will have-- limits employee contributions, and will cost the district in 25, 26, about $130,000 in contributions. Now, there are some employees that might have a possibility to move what they call the educators' plan, and if that option is taken, we could-- they would save approximately $77,000 across their premiums, and we would save approximately $44,000. But it's-- things are up in the air with respect to that. The health enrollment-- open enrollment period runs now, May 15th to June 15th, and a letter was sent to the employees regarding any benefits they could accrue by changes associated with the plan. Standard and Poor's upgraded us to an AA+, which is really, really good. Now, they made an outlook change where we went from positive to stable, and the big concern, they said, is-- as it was expressed to Robin, was our planning horizon. They wanted more time, which is not that easy for us to do. So, you know, we have a five-year plan for the building, and we have a five-year plan on things, so, I mean, there's some things that we cannot change about that. But the-- going to AA+ was great. With respect to bus routes, the high school has canceled a route, which could cost us approximately $40,000. So there is going to be a review of routes and stops, et cetera, and it is conceivable that things could change. There are some buses on the CMS route that might be able to be combined, depending on the routing, so-- and especially complex when you put in athletics with it. So it's got to be all looked at again, but that could be in the future, like I said, a change in the buses and the stops. The auditors have started to work already, and you're going to see agenda items that are-- you know, most of them are pretty standard, that you've probably seen before. There's things associated with grants. Something about RFP for our banking services is viewed that PNC is too-- is it PNC, Robin?
Yes.
Their rates are getting a little too high. We approved the bills list. There was one bill for $38.14, which we're going to sign off on tonight, so otherwise, we're okay. Everything is good. Excuse me. There was something that came up associated with an employee and the cost of Cobra, as it happens over the summer, et cetera, so we're going to be paying the healthcare for that. Very nice of the PTO to donate their-- I guess the remaining fund balance to the school for the purchase of a smart board. There are some library shelving that we're putting out to be sold online, and-- excuse me. Robin has signed a new vendor for substitutes, nothing that we have to use, but at least it's another source that we have, and we will meet again on July 2nd.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions for Karen? Okay, Danielle?
No, nothing to report. We had to-- we had on Memorial Day a meeting for community relations, and then we decided not to have one, so we will reconvene or have a new one in June.
Okay. Thank you. Crystal?
Nothing to report.
Okay, yeah.
The Student Achievement and Curriculum Committee met on May 21st. All members were in attendance. We reviewed just continued progress on the transition to the Ready Mathematics for next year. Again, the continued progress with the MTSS training, which is continuing on for next year as well. There's some planning in those conversations, not only in the moment, but for the summer training and then into next year's course planning. We reviewed summer curriculum hours, which will be focused on some enhancements to ELA curriculum in Millington, some enhancements for Grade 5 through 8 social studies, and then the STEAM 6 through 8, just updating with the current practice from the first year of implementing the program. We talked about the Seeing Eye Puppy presentation for today, the attendance updates, which are continuing to improve once we're through the flu season. We are talking about parent webinar topics for next year, and with the June meeting, it was right around, you know, the end of the school year, that week after the school year, so we decided to forego the June meeting. We will meet on July 2nd, so our next report won't be at the next meeting. It will be at the July meeting. That was it.
Okay. Any questions for Ann? No? Okay.
The attendance does continue to go in the right direction. We just have-- we have it all on the website, and we just have the May totals uploaded, and it's continuing to go upwards.
It's a combination of people not being sick anymore and parents seeing that deadline of being home the whole summer. Okay, sorry, Alex.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Katie?
Okay. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met on May 28. We-- I'm just going to give a really quick overview, as most of the stuff has been ongoing all year. But Gillette, we had a sidewalk assessment to make sure that there was no tripping issues or anything like that. They're going to actually try to grind down some places to kind of make it flat and safer and re-- like, where they can, like, kind of patch it in a way, in a very professional way to make it look good and to work really well. But they're going to try that to see if that works better than just ripping up the whole thing. So, you know, it's really great that they're going to try this out, and also it'll make sure that the grounds are safer. And also, there's been some poison ivy at Millington, and that's been addressed. And also, there's a branch that is going to be removed over the ball field at Millington, so that's kind of good news there. We also went over how there's a lot of different activities over the summer at Central Middle School and at Gillette. Extended school-- ESY is going to be at Gillette, and Central Middle School will have Summer Institute, Band Camp, Lisbona Camp, and Rec Camp. So one of the things that was discussed is possibly having the different camps at Central kind of coordinate in some fashion to make sure that that space is being utilized as logically as possible and also, you know, the most efficient use of the space. So I think that's really positive thing, because one of the things we kept on saying is, these are all our kids, and so we want to make sure that everyone is getting an equitable ability to use everything that is in the facilities. Then we had our rod grants. That's all-- you know, everything is getting in order for that. There were 11-- for the rod grant, there's 11 unit ventilators on order, and there are 13 RTUs for Millington. We kind of had a quick overview of the finalized library layout for Central Middle School. It looks really amazing. The bright colors, the-- I think the kids are going to be really excited. I think the teachers are going to be excited. I'm really looking forward to seeing it with people in it, so I'm very excited for that. I think we all are. And then we just kind of went over what was going on for the summer. And also, there's a-- they're working on a security grant for the district, focusing on more cameras and more technology items. You know, originally wanted to try fencing and lockwork, but also-- I don't know how to explain it. Like, you know, it's like key passes and things like that to-- so it's through the federal government. We'll find out. And we have security plans already in place for the summer, but if we get this grant, there'll be some more in the fall that we can be able to do. We are skipping our June meeting, since this was so late in May, and our next meeting will be July 16th. The Long Hill Ed Foundation, we had our color run. It was May 6th. That was really successful and a lot of fun, and we had lots of messy kids, and I'm still getting stuff out of my car. It was fantastic, and we raised a nice bit of money, which will go back to the schools. And more than anything, the kids had a blast. I think the parents had more fun than the kids. My husband got to throw dye at children, and I don't want to know why he made that-- he had so much fun. It was great. And so that was great. We have our next meeting, the third Tuesday-- excuse me, the third Monday of the month, and we will send notifications out about that. It's an in-person meeting, which is always fun. And also, we are updating our FORCE classes. We kind of are trying to, like, level the playing field. It's-- we're only doing in-house, all teachers, so we're not going to outside vendors in hopes to kind of make it more affordable for families. They're kind of organizing so everything is similar in cost and to make it more efficient for everyone, and also so everyone's happy. So there'll be more information about that coming in the fall. And we just want to thank all the teachers and the families for, you know, making our FORCE program so successful. So that's all we have for now.
Thank you. Any questions for Katie? No? Okay. I don't have anything to report, so go to superintendent's report.
Okay. I just want to share a couple of items. At the end of the agenda, you'll see a resolution about the annual HIB report card, which has been received from the state and is posted on our HIB webpage. You may recall last fall, we completed the self-assessment based on the prior year's data. That's 2023-24, and presented it at the October board meeting. The official score that we got recently mirrors the self-assessment, and as you can tell by the score, 77 out of 78 points, and as you may recall from the presentation, we're doing very well with the program in our district. We're fortunate to have great students and teachers and strong relationships, which create a positive climate and reduce the number of HIB complaints. The last step in the annual process is board approval of the report card. Agenda item number 50 contains the appropriate resolution. Also, I just want to mention that Robin and I presented next year's budget to the town council at its meeting last Wednesday night. We appreciated the support of the board members who were able to join us. The council was grateful for the presentation, and all went very smoothly. On Friday, the eighth graders had a memorable educational experience at Ellis Island and the Statue of Liberty. Back home, Millington Field Day was a great success on Friday, as was the chorus concert on May 21st, which was standing room only. We look forward to the art show and band concert at Millington on Thursday evening. We also look forward to Central's commencement in two weeks. And last, the board retreat is Monday, June 16th at 5:30, and our next regular board meeting is July 7th. All the best to our students, staff, and families for a rejuvenating summer vacation. And I'll turn it over to Robin.
Thank you. I want to go over a few of the items that are on the agenda tonight. As part of our year-end financial process, we are required to notify the board in advance of any funds that may be designated for transfer into reserve accounts for the following school year. This includes capital reserve, maintenance reserve, and emergency reserve. While the final transfer amounts will be based on available surplus at year-end, this step is necessary to remain in compliance and to ensure transparency and proper board authorization. I want to also talk just a little bit about two of the grants that other people sort of mentioned, but I just have a little bit more information for you. The district is currently applying to the School Violence Prevention Program. The full application is due at the end of June 2025. The grant's performance period is scheduled to begin on October 1st, 2025, so award notifications are expected prior to that date so that we can implement planning. The district is currently in the process of applying for the grant, with the full application due at the end of June. The grant will be used to purchase security cameras throughout the district, and depending on the grant amount is how many we will get. The grant's performance period is scheduled to begin on October 1st, and therefore, we hope to get an award notification sometime in the late summer. We have also applied-- thank you, Dr. Jones-- to the optimal-- funding for the Optimal Comprehensive Universal Screeners Grant, which would be in the amount of $3,630. With the support from the New Jersey Focus Grant, the district will continue the Eye Ready Universal Literacy Screener for all students in grades K to 3. The grant is just for students in K to 3. That doesn't mean that that's only where the program will be used. It's just where the grant is being used. This adaptive standards-aligned tool will be administered three times per year to provide a comprehensive picture of each student's reading development. The Eye Ready screener identifies specific skill gaps in key literacy areas, including phonics, vocabulary, and comprehension, enabling educators to deliver timely and targeted interventions. So this grant has been applied for. We hope to hear from the state shortly that we received it. Also on the agenda tonight, in accordance with Chapter 47, I want to report that a list has been prepared of all contracts that are expected to be renewed, awarded, or allowed to expire over the course of the upcoming school year. This requirement ensures transparency in our procedural practice and allows the board to be informed of anticipated contractual activity. Like I said, this is a yearly requirement. That's why you see that big long list. Lastly, I think Karen mentioned this, that we are updating the media center. You're going to love it. It really looks good. I saw the carpeting today. But I'd also like to note that the library shelving that is currently there will no longer be needed following the summer updates, and therefore, we're going to list it on GovDeals, which is a public auction site. This allows us to responsibly dispose of the surplus items and potentially recoup some value for the district. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments from the public on agenda items? Okay, let's move into resolutions. The first four resolutions are related to retirements and the service that we just honored, so I'm going to ask Karen, can you move those resolutions in?
So moved.
Second.
Good pick, Robin.
I'm going with you.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you want me to read the names and everything?
I feel like we just went through--
Yeah.
Don't you think we went through that? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Danielle, will you move in minutes, number five?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Miss Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Chris, we move in financials, numbers six through 24.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Is 23 part of financials?
Yes.
I need to abstain from that. Otherwise, yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. And will you move in special services, numbers 25 through 29?
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
I just want to ask, this doesn't necessarily mean these are going to be the only schools. This is just as we know it now, right? And for the special ed schools.
Yes, and then, remember, the list keeps going, and they bold it when something new is put in--
Running.
Put on, so that when-- if you see it next time, you'll see the same list and a bold one as we-- as the list grows.
And I probably should have asked this before. Approximately, what was the percent increase from tuition from year to year? Because they don't have a limit, right?
No, they don't. Many of them were over 10%. Many of them were over 10%.
I thought so.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay. Roll call.
But aren't we, I mean, yes, the, the tuition increase is quite significant, but our, our number of students has gone down considerably.
I think we have six students.
But I think we were way above that in the past.
Yeah. A few years ago, I think it was over 15.
Yeah. So that's a positive.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
That's Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
And Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Alex, will you move in personnel, numbers 30 through 43?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes. But abstain from 32.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Katie, will you move in curriculum, number 44?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Back to you, Karen. Will you move in policies, number 45 through 49?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. And Danielle, will you move in other, number 50 to 51?
So moved.